It's probably very cool.
Cool. My little one is a bird, he's staying in touch.
What do you mean?
It's to the fire, United States of America. It's your republic which stands one nation under God. Neither fiscal nor monetary justice.
Alright, welcome to another school year. I know there are no celebrations whatsoever. So, alright, just going to say there's three board members who are out. We only have one revision and that's the personnel report. You'll see that in your packet. Otherwise, I don't see any other reasons to change anything on the agenda like that. Any comments or anything?
No, I would just like to make one, or actually a few comments. Thank you to our administrative team, the middle school staff, Andrea, Nate, just the flexibility in working through a situation that could have been more difficult. There were a lot of contingency plans put in place that never actually happened. So, there was a lot of work put into that. But appreciate the flexibility. Off to a really good start, our admin and our teachers providing PD the last few days. Nick providing us breakfast. It was a positive start to the school year. Lots of hard work made all that happen, so thank you to everybody.
Excellent. Yep. Next thing, I think so. Public meeting is being recorded in conference with Montana Law. Although as an attempt to provide for public portions of this meeting will be recorded in audio/video format. A remaining in the meeting, those present consent to being recorded and display the footage that we posted on the school district website. Please contact the district office if you have any questions concerning how to the school districts reporting obligations under Montana's Public Meeting Law. Very much. Alright, for that. Any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Perfect, alright, we'll get rolling then. I'm hoping we have a special presentation, the student council's not here yet. Food service, Nick?
Yeah, uh, finishing up July in, for summer reading. We did about 253 per day in July compared to 181 last year. The week in August, we did about 207 per day compared to 176 the year prior. That's about it, we're just getting ready for the school year. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Perfect, and I think you're still looking for a lead cook, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll put that out there, anybody's listening. So, perfect, technology, Shaker?
Thank you. A couple things to highlight on my report there. We are about and not quite halfway through the VMware transition to a new Microsoft solution for our servers. Just to remind you, this is a really expensive license renewal for VMware after they were purchased and pivoting to Microsoft. And that should be significant savings for the district with no degradation of performance or functionality. My engineer Derek was actually sick for a while, so he apologized profusely about falling by a week or so behind, but we're a little bit shy at halfway through that and everything's going away we needed it to. We have a little bit of an internet issue on Monday, but we got past, or last Monday, we got past that one. The other thing I'd like to point out is down the bottom right hand corner, as the board probably knows, the district disposes of reasonable amount of technology equipment each year. It's usually in the life stuff that's been in service for anywhere from five to 10 years, depending on the hardware. We had a lab in middle school, the infamous pod lab that was retired for a few different reasons. And that hardware was idle for a while. And this year, I reached out to Salvation Army and we donated it to them and it's going to go to children in Africa. So, a full lab worth of desktop computers and monitors and peripherals all headed out with them. They were super appreciative. I really like the idea of reperusing things that no longer serve our needs. And then the last thing I'll just point out is that I was hoping to invite you all last week to the AI, what we refer to as the Bitterroot Basecamp. But of course, we changed the dates on the school board, so I got a little tricked on that one. But I did want you guys to know that I'm sure our building out against, particularly Andrea and Marlon can speak to this with a little bit more detail. But the anecdotal feedback that we got, we are going to do a formal survey, but the anecdotal feedback was that this really was a very much appreciated and very much needed presentation. Those of you who are familiar with Montana Digital Academy and JCS Network, they just nailed it. They came down and did a full group presentation in the pack. Very impressive setup there. And they just sort of deconstructed what AI is, what AI isn't. I think it was a really helpful presentation for the staff that sort of dabbled in it. He talked about some current attitudes around AI and maybe gave you some things to think about. And then after presenting a little bit broader view of what AI is and what it isn't and how it might impact our classrooms, we had small group sessions that I think really gave the teachers an opportunity, especially those who are interested to dig in. And they were using the notebook online, which is part of our Google suite, as well as Gemini for some of the teachers who are just interested in how to actually do queries and the resources and get better results from them. But we would like to get them back down here again. I'm happy to, or up here again. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on it, but it really felt like the impact was just exactly what we wanted to in terms of helping the teachers appreciate kind of what this new phenomenon really means in more of an educational setting. So, I'll go there as well.
Awesome, yeah. Any questions for Shaker?
Thank you.
Perfect. Any comments on the panel support? We see Kathy is.
Kathy is not making with us on Zoom, right? Just listening. But I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one question. What is a trauma-informed classroom?
Yeah, so this is a training that was offered through the stock department. So, they paid for an expert to come in and provide training to staff. And what it is, is an awareness to potential trauma that students may go through in their childhood that could negatively impact their ability to engage in school. And so, it's strategies on dealing with those sorts of students with those sorts of ACEs is what they're called adverse childhood experiences. And trying to give them some tools for dealing with that classroom.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions? Alright, keep on moving on. Against custodial transferation grounds, go for it, Jamie.
This started the end of the year. These teachers come in, we have live desk, put together rooms, we move. A lot of contractors in today. We've got carpet guys, sprayer guys. We have some cleaning rooftop units and stuff. Busy time of the year, then we have bats. Doing a lot of that, so I think that's all. I think the guy is pretty confident that, you know, come Thursday, we'll be fine to be in there and everything. Looking, going well on that, so.
Perfect. Any questions for Jamie? Alright, sounds good. Legal human resources?
So, I've been busy with policy updates, legislative changes to handbooks, contracts, hiring. We, Kristen, who was kind enough to invite you to do a DIR presentation this week, which was really fun and I think goes well with you. And then also that's.
Fun, yes. Sounds good. Website communications? Do you want to talk about any of the rooms or anything like that?
So, we are implementing the rooms application, which is part of our APTD drill share package for dealing with direct parent communication in the classrooms. Athletics, we're experiencing some kinks because there are some transitional growing pains with that. But we're working through those, generating some things that need to be resolved and then we'll keep chipping away at those until we feel like we are off and running. So.
Perfect, yep. Thank you. Alright, principal from the projectors and all that good stuff. Yes, we're super excited, excited. Eric, you want to go first?
Sure. So, on my board, the board did make the packet. Sorry if they're on top of the sheet. I just want to thank everyone that makes what we do look so amazing. Our Browns and our building look fantastic. The new paint on the daily letters, like just makes my heart so happy. It looks great out there. Nick, who searched through to our kids that kest on a jumpstart all summer. Like that really is a huge enhancement to the educational offerings that go along there, so thank you for that. And then I didn't put this in the board packet, but I just wanted to quickly touch about jumpstart. It was a super successful program this summer. The second year that we ran jumpstart, we enrolled 30 kids. 26 showed up for most of the time, which is great. And we saw really good growth in their literacy data over that time. So, the hope is when they come back in just a couple of days, we won't have as much summer backside for those kids that are really at risk.
Alright, any questions for Erica? Welcome back, Randy, here we go.
So, I kind of forgot about the board packet, but I'm really sorry. I will have one in September. I don't have any current updates on special education. We still have students incoming and so I can record those numbers out in September, like how many added districts and all those good things. But for Washington, as of, well, as of tomorrow, hopefully, as long as they do what they need to do on their assessment, we'll have 67 kids enrolled. We're really excited to see them on Monday. The custodian who works at Washington D.C. has been amazing. He worked super hard all summer. That building looks phenomenal, like the whole time I've been there. This is probably the best it's looked, so huge kudos to him. And then otherwise, the teachers have just been in and working really hard on their rooms. We're excited to meet and greet tomorrow and get everything rolling.
Yeah, fantastic. Alright, any questions for me? Alright, what you're going to talk about, go ahead.
I also did not make the board packet. It's been a little batty in our world, so. But I really do wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the incredible staff that I get to work with at Pion, Borghano District. We've navigated some interesting challenges in this and made a lot of contingency plans. And the middle school staff has been so resilient and demonstrating that grit, that teamwork that it takes when your world is upended and your plans are shifted, you're kicked out of your rooms, like you know, that afternoon that it happened. But sorry, everybody else and the staff in the pod finally feels like the lucky ones because they used to have their classrooms and they invited all of us, the staff in. But in addition to that, maintenance and our custodial crews and administration, all the other buildings really have been supportive beyond opening up their buildings even when things were looking like it was going to be something of a nightmare to navigate. And it's worked out really well. And so, we really are, as a staff, really grateful for the support, encouragement and leadership that Mr. Tennis, Ms. Lewanski and the board has provided us through this process. And we are looking forward to welcoming back our 484 students instead of the little flying animals that we have to work with, so.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Marlon, no bats, go ahead.
No bats here. Thanks to Jamie and Tom, who made it to Brown. I did the summer, I really appreciate it. Nick brought the meals for summer school. We carry all the way through July 28th, I believe. And summer school is very successful this year. A lot of kids get original credit as well as credit that they had not made. Right now, we're sitting at 42 new students in HHS, plus nine foreign exchange students and two athletic-only kids. So, right now, we're up over 50 kids, roughly 50 new kids. And we do have 15 kids at APLAB, but we're definitely in the positive as far as numbers go. I think we're going to be back up there roughly around that 550, 555. Went on dust settles, so that for the better later day. We have freshman academy in Mooreham. Seniors come in for senior meetings, locate the parking space. Barbecue provided by Delta PD, so I appreciate that. And also supported very much by Nick. And then on Thursday, we have the Montana Secretary of Sacred and Jacobson will be here to talk to our seniors. She's going to talk about great new businesses and winter job details. So, we're looking forward to that. And then we have our slot for junior assemblies as well, so. Everything's getting ready to roll, so we're excited about it. I think you're awesome, great start.
Awesome, thanks, Marlon. Any comments for Marlon, questions? No, perfect. Let us.
Yeah, obviously starting fall sports. We've got 201 kids out for fall sports. It's around like 36, 37% of our total population, so a lot of kids involved, a lot of excitement. Obviously, the new year brings hope and excitement for all of our teams and looking forward to a successful fall season. This fall, we've got two divisionals. We've got divisional golf, divisional cross-country hosting here. And then obviously, we've got some other stuff down the road too for the fall. So, just excited to get going.
And not having to worry about air quality, I'm going to keep that under wraps, so.
Yeah.
That's not working, he walked in and he's got real. Complete it.
That's very, yes, so, cool. Ryan?
Yeah, I go the thanks to Jamie. Of course, we moved into Washington from the ALC, you know, for the charter. And that has been a huge undertaking, lots of equipment, lots of boss, lots of folks, lots of desks. So, grateful for Jamie, grateful to Jacqueline Brazil, who's been with ET Trove there for seven years for all the work she did with Joanna Williams packing up. So, too grateful. And we're really close to being set completely up. I think decoration-wise, we're going to let the kids have some input on what they want the space to look like, kind of make it their own. You know, one of the things that we were really proud of at the modular next to west view was that it didn't feel like a school as much, you know? And that really appeals to some of the students, especially the drop-off freshman students. So, we're trying to, you know, get that space set up in a way that's going to meet our needs and excited to get going. And Wendy and the pre-K staff has been super welcoming and we're excited to be sharing that space. And then I don't have anything really in addition to add to the board report.
Awesome, thank you so much. Perfect, alright, so before we do the student report, I'll just say, I did say this last time, but welcome, Mr. Tennis. I hope you're having fun with all of our fun stuff here. And I'm sure, as I told you last second ago, I'm pretty sure you own your bingo card and did not have bats. All the things you have to start, so. But it sounds like transitions are going really well and all that kind of stuff, so. But I'll let you give your report.
Yeah, thank you. And mostly, my report was, there's a theme tonight about bats. So, I really appreciate Jamie and Jamie's stayed up late to meet with contractors to actually observe the bats moving a little bit and helping us to identify what those strategies would be. I thought we had a pretty good plan in place if we would have had a bigger problem. But I think that we have, starting late, given us the opportunity to make sure that we get the bats out and can safely start school for staff. Looks like Thursday, staff will be able to get back into the building and start doing some planning in their rooms and set up in their rooms. And we'll be looking forward to starting after Labor Day. Not ideal, but again, that's the true color showing up in a tough time. People really rallied and made this into, I think, a positive in the end. So, I'm appreciative of that. Our opening day was really great, good energy. It's been fun to be introduced and meet new people in the district and look forward to continuing that. Just a really positive vibe with the people I meet. So, very excited and glad to be here. Appreciate the warm wishes and the warm welcome that I've got from others.
Excellent.
May I say one more bat-related, thank you?
Absolutely.
Our partners over at Bitterroot, Christina Berger, just continues to just be amazing. We called on short notice and said, hey, can we have after building? And she said, just let me know what you need, out of hesitation. So, we didn't need to use that contingency plan, but really appreciate that she was willing to work with us no matter what.
Yep, awesome, that's great. Keep that great progression healthy. Awesome. Okay, any questions for Mr. Jones? Alright, board committee wise, we have governance. Just talking about mostly this agenda and that kind of stuff. So, kind of moving on from there, did have a day of things. Kind of figure out what we want to govern, like we're on. So, we're still working on that part. So, that's what I have for that. Alright, anything else before we move on? Alright, consent agenda. So, in your board report, you have a new revised personnel report. It's in front of you. So, this was just an additional para and adult partner instructor. So, that's Jake is at the bottom and there was a pair of professional appointments. So, you'll see all the different bits and pieces of that. You also have in your board packet all the minutes of previous regular and special board meetings. And then claims, warrants, financial courses, then the patients, the other district students and all that kind of stuff. So, any comments, questions, Mr. Jones, anything to note?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Sure.
Just with the additional work time, additional hours, I struggle with the idea of making the teachers be an hour. the teachers be an hourly rate type of system. I know it is how it is and I just, from my experience of teaching, you just do the job. I know there was a contract set of hours and I know that you're entitled to leave and I know that most teachers didn't do that. You just show up and prepare and teach the kids and if you gotta stay at the library, you stay at the library. I talked to Ms. Bed about what's going on with the additional hours and as a librarian, it seems like it's part of your job to get ready for the school year, but we're billing it as an hourly rate. PD is another thing, like it seems like we have our teachers teaching PD. Professional development is great. I also think it needs to be considered to do professional development at a different time, like right before the school year, it's hard to process all of that and then implement it in the school year because you're already ready to go and then there's professional development during the year. And it's really hard to implement new ideas that you're learning and being trained with while you're teaching because you're busy preparing lessons, grading papers, working with kids, all that stuff. So, it just strikes me as maybe we should rethink that. And then, lastly, I struggle with the adult education, at least a couple of these. I understand that it's providing an opportunity for adults in our community to learn something, but the men's and women's basketball, there's no actual teaching going on. Let's pick up basketball. And we're paying someone who's open in the gym, he wants to be there. And people in the community have to sign up and pay to go play hoop. It just seems like that's out of the scope of what we intended to be. And I understand the argument. They already do, I know there's liability concerns, and yet, the football field and the track, tennis courts, all of our outdoor facilities, they're the same concerns and it's really hard to police that and monitor that and so we just don't. So, it's okay, but again, this paying someone to teach men's basketball seems like an unnecessary use of district funds. And maybe we can, like the whole comment about hourly rate, like I want to pay our teachers more, I think our teachers should be paid more. And I think that's important, maybe we can clean up how we spend money in other places and find ways to pay them more. I don't know, I'm a new board member, but that's just my opinion, those are my comments.
Just a couple of things, in terms of PD, we do try to have some ongoing follow-up to the things that we do put in place so throughout the year. So, for example, like Mike's discussion about AI, because the one-and-done idea of professional development is not necessarily an effective thing, but if you can re-circle back to different ideas and give people some tangible time to put it into into classrooms, that's one of the things that I think is really problematic about public education is, you know, people want change and they want different, but our teachers are in front of students all the time, which is great, but it doesn't leave a whole lot of freedom to be able to be innovative and plan, but I think our staff does a pretty good job at trying to do that.
I'm speaking from my own personal experience as a teacher. I didn't have the bandwidth to be in front of students and implement a new idea. I was a new teacher and I was not a good teacher, I was a new teacher. And it's hard and just getting through the days was a win sometimes. So, trying to like, just teach the kids and then, "Oh wait, we're gonna do this new thingy thing?" Like, yeah, okay.
You're absolutely right, it is hard and it is hard to get some of those new things in and I know that, I'm hoping that our teachers will give our administration some feedback as to how PD went, the strengths and weaknesses of that, and hopefully, we can adjust to what fits what their needs are. And then the adult, I understand that perspective, the alternative perspective is, I think it's a good thing that if our staff wants to come in and you wanna come in and use our facility, I think that's a good thing and I would hate the alternative of saying, "Hey, if a lot of facilities, gotta get some insurance in place and all of that sort of stuff."
I'm not suggesting they shouldn't come in, teaching must open the door, open the door.
I think the liability is.
It is the liability thing, so I get it. I know where you're coming from, I hope you know where I'm coming from.
Understood?
Yeah.
Sounds good, any other discussion? All right, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. I just will witness, we've kind of rolled.
Yeah, we've gone through the bat stuff. I will give you an update on, do you want me to jump to the federal funding?
Yeah, that's fine. So, yeah, the next one, we're actually, we're delaying the.
Yeah, our audit report, let me back up one. Audit report, Mr. Solokup is still working on some debt service issues and needs some time to resolve that with Kathy. The two of them have been communicating that there needs to be some follow-up between the two of them and so that report will be coming in the next board meeting, so we'll finish that up next month.
Yep, go on to federal funding.
Yeah, federal funding. So, we have, funds are not in what we call E grant, so they haven't really been released to districts yet, so we can have plans and Wendy does a lot of this work and so we're kind of waiting for those numbers before you can put some things in there. The one exception to that is our Title IV Part B, the Twenty-First Century Grant, which we use to fund the Keystone Program, so that has been released to the district, so we have roughly a hundred and nine thousand dollars in that funding, plus we have some reserves that were from previous donations, so we are in a good position to continue that program as is without any support. I know earlier, we had talked about some support from the Boys and Girls Clubs. We don't really need that at this particular point, although the relationship is enough to where we could circle back to that conversation if need be, but we will continue to monitor the health financially and the success of that program throughout the year. I know Brian is examining some possible grants, so it is a very strong program that we want to keep going, so we might have to make some other plans as time goes on because we're not sure if those funds will be available in another year.
That's good. Okay, an update, no reaction on that, but hopefully, it will not be that. All right, we'll move to new business. So, the first one is, so making it easier on ourselves, consideration request for people to twenty-five, twenty-six district activities, so we sent this a long time ago because we have a lot of activities and stuff like that, one by one, by one by one. These are our normal things and stuff like that. So, any comments on any of these, just any of these activities? If not, can I get a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six? It's right after items in the new business, so go through all the financial reports. There you go. There you go, yep. So, obviously, if there are new events that come up, they come back to us, but this one is, this is to hopefully cover a much, so we want to keep coming back. In the past, there's some, these things will happen and that was a problem.
You'll see some others over the course of a year or two that are not on this list, but things will come up, so.
Can I get a motion to approve the district activities? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, next one is the request to approve the advanced opportunity funds to reduce AP and dual enrollment fees by fifty percent, did this last year. Marlon, Ryan, go ahead.
Yep. I'll follow up if you need more.
Same thing we did last year, except we're gonna have a little bit better system in place. It was quite difficult to collect the dual enrollment fees, so we have a parent letter going home and outlines every single date that is very important on the dual enrollment calendar. Registration deadlines have been bumped up, so that's something to be mindful of. We've gotta get all full fall courses to roll by September ninth. And then there's some really important drop dates that quite frankly, have been very hard for students to manage in the past where they'll drop, say, calculus or writing one-on-one with the high school and they'll move to a different class, but they don't execute that drop in the University of Montana system, which could cause, generally doesn't cause an F on their transcript, but very regularly has caused for some students, especially across the state, but in our district as well, Ws, withdrawals on the transcript, which are no impact GPA, but are unsightly and not a great, you know, you don't wanna walk around with much Ws. So, we're trying to clean up, make sure that parents understand those dates, students understand those dates, and then the parents sign off on the fact, you know, we're paying for half of your child's dual enrollment fees, which adds up to thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents per credit. That's half of what Missoula College charges their students and Missoula College charges half of what the University of Montana charges per credit. So, the credits are being earned at such a reduced price and there's also no fees, you know, no fees associating with books or anything like that, no class, generally no class fees unless we have class fees internally that we have. So, it's a screaming good deal and we're trying to make sure that we help our kids take advantage of it, that we make it as affordable as possible, and then we also streamline the process to mitigate the frustration and confusion that can come with being enrolled in two schools, being enrolled in high school and college concurrently. So, that's the big dual enrollment update. And then AP, kind of same as normal, AP is not as confusing. You just pay fifty instead of ninety-nine for the test if you wanna take the test. You do not have to take the test, students have a choice to enroll and dual enrollment and take the AP test, it's up to them. Some classes are dual enrollment and AP and they can pay for dual enrollment and they can take the AP test if they wanna hedge their bet and make sure they get that credit, or if they know they're not going to the Montana University system and they wanna just pursue, you know, credits through AP because they know that they're going to a private university or an elite university that's not gonna accept those state transfer credits. So, it's seemingly a home run in terms of what the students are able to get out of this financially.
So, advanced opportunity, just to follow up, this was, let's literally do the grant into the districts, it should reduce costs without pocket for kids, that's the whole idea of it. We can't use it for anything else except for a very small twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of the whole budget.
To go to, to go to pay for.
CTE.
CTE, so they do. But we do other things in this, we pay for CNA, we pay for our CDL licenses, we pay for drill certifications, any type of thing, tool belts for our kids who are doing construction training. So, it's not just going to this, it goes to a lot of different things, but the whole idea is reduce not a cost for parents, so.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions, Marlon? It's a pretty great program. All right, can I get a motion to approve the use of the advanced opportunity funds for reducing the speeds? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Perfect. Next one is approval of the CSCT collaboration agreement with Alere through June twenty-sixth.
So, Wendy, you wanna go here or I can start? Well, I'll start. Alere is a mental health provider for our students that qualify and it is to offer support to our students so that they can be successful in the classroom. Students that maybe are either academically or emotionally in a situation where they could use extra support, so qualifying students will have this additional tier assistance to help them be successful. So, one of the things that could potentially come out of this is largely a Medicaid sort of situation with some federal changes in Medicaid qualifications that could impact us down the road, but overall, this is a really important service for our students and really important service for our teachers. So, this is something that I highly support and recommend that we were doing.
And in fact, no cost to us, as well, Alere, we don't, there is no money that we're giving them and it's nothing that we have to do with that, so. The team, the right now, we have one team at Daley, we would like to have more teams. They're absolutely phenomenal, quite frankly, I think they've made a huge, huge difference at Daley.
Excellent. Perfect, any comments? Can I get a motion to approve the collaboration agreement with Alere? Will you guys need a second?
Second.
Perfect, all right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, next one is the contract with Office of the Court Administration, Twilwick First Judicial District for the Ice Camp Program at the Middle School.
Yeah, so a program for at-risk students that are, have some relationship with the juvenile justice system, so there is a payment and a per-student sort of rate up to thirty-nine thousand dollars annually to help support students in that. So, we send in paperwork with qualifying students' names and those sorts of things and receive reimbursement from the state, so. Andrea, anything to add there?
So, we don't, it's not limited to those that are, that are members of the juvenile justice system because actually, our members for that have diminished and the contract allows for students who might be at risk or engaging with them based on the criteria of grades and attendance and behavioral issues. So, it's a good tier-two bridge so that we can prevent students as much as possible from developing the criteria, which makes them more susceptible to engaging with the juvenile justice system.
Who is doing the work, who's receiving the compensation?
We have an interventionist, a para, who is an interventionist and is a former special education teacher who is working with us this year, doing the work with those students.
All right, any other discussion? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve this contract with Twenty-First Judicial Youth Court for the Ice Camp Program at the Middle School?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ryan, the next one is basically the same thing, but high school for tutoring, right?
Yeah, it's our study hall, we're in this, so we work with freshman sophomores, seniors, mainly with freshman sophomores. And so, it's kind of trying the same thing, they're doing the grade checks, they're providing instruction, and so it does help pay, it actually compensates for those two people, so.
So, cool, any other comments? All right, can I take a motion to approve the contract for the Twilwick First Judicial District with the high school? So, can I get a second? Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Next one's a fun one, great deal with the Missoula Children's Theatre for auditions and practices and processes.
For the, for the second year in a row, the Janeette Human Foundation, now that Stevensville has agreed to pay or has offered to pay for the residency fee to bring this program for its hosts, last year, it was super great experience, we did improvements, and this year, we'll be doing hands-on, we'll say, "How good to go."
Excellent, so, cool. Can I get a motion to approve the great deal with the Missoula Children's Theater for this performance? Can I get a second? Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Perfect, next one is our rental here with the Peter College, so finally got this all hammered out. Go ahead.
We are, we're looking at this tonight. We'll take this to their Board of Regents in September, so it's a little bit flip-flopped usually, but we like to do it everywhere around, they'll be quarterly, so we're just asking you all to take a look at it tonight. We're able to increase the rent this year as we've added a few services to the building and we're just recovering costs for those services. Also, we increased the utility reimbursement to reflect the actual cost of utilities this past year, so those are both improvements and everything else is pretty much unchanged.
Sounds good. All right, can I get a motion to approve the rental agreement with the Peter College?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Perfect. Next one is to repair, replace the engine of the two thousand and eight MCI bus. The reason is because this is an excess of seventy-three-twenty, unfortunately, you don't have the authority to go that high, right, with twenty, so in there, you'll see the invoice, which is a big difference, and lots of things that cost a lot of money to get this thing.
Yes, the good news about this, with the approval, this adds value to an existing bus, which can then be recouped through the bus depreciation fund, and so the seventy-one thousand addition to the cost of the bus becomes the actual value of the bus and so we then can depreciate that over time and basically recoup one hundred and fifty percent of that money.
So, does federal funds, like fund the bus depreciation fund or how?
This is a state thing.
State funds go in to fund the bus.
Right. And designed to be able, for districts to be able to maintain their buses and sell them when they need to and, yeah.
Perfect, it's way cheaper than buying another bus, actually. So, cool. Can I get a motion to authorize the repair of the engine of the two thousand and eight MCI bus?
What's the timeframe on that, sorry?
Yeah, that's okay, you're good. Time frame? Time frame?
Um, then, I'm not sure. Tom's not here. I know that he had some, he's had some conversations with Argos about getting this done quickly this fall. He was hoping to have this on a previous board agenda, but we didn't get it in.
Because I imagine time is of the essence, right? We are already pretty short on buses before they need to go.
Yes.
For sure.
Okay, so, all right, good comment, all right? So still looking for a motion. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Excellent, any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Next one is request approval of the beverage agreement with Coca-Cola. So in your pack, you'll see this beverage agreement that goes along with all that kind of stuff. Mr. Tens?
Yeah, so this is, I think, a beneficial contract for both Coca-Cola and the district. You know, having this sort of an arrangement with a financial note of essentially eighty-five hundred dollars per agreement year is pretty darn good. In some cases, there is, that is a much reduced, you know, with other districts, you get a much reduced rate than eighty-five hundred. So I think this is a good contract for us. I know there are some questions about the Smart Snack compliance. We are totally compliant with Smart Snacks, which is established by the USDA. So we can't put just anything in there in the vending machines, but we've recouped some money, and this would help us with some ongoing costs for our football field, our scoreboard, and other things that may be of need to us over the course of time. I do recommend that we approve it, Matt.
Sounds good. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just, my question, the value of promoting soda and energy drinks. And I don't think that's a good idea at our school. I mean, there's a time for, there's, of course, many times for soda and lots of unhealthy things. I don't think promoting it at the school is the right time.
Have to agree a little bit with him. I'm going down this page, I'm like full throttle, full throttle, must, 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 must.
On that list right there, that's just all that they provide? We don't, we don't.
They're not necessarily.
No, that's just all of their old list that they can, that we can get from them, but we don't.
So this is our list?
Yeah. So if you look at pending, you'll see everything. And if we wanted to, I don't know, we could, but we don't, we don't do that. And so a lot of this is in conjunction also with our Booster Club. This is what we sell at concession stands during games, during tournaments. Like Mr. Tens said, honestly, we get way more money from them. Like I was talking to other districts, most of them don't even get money from them. So it's, we worked pretty hard on this to get this to where it's at. And, you know, for our concession stands, we have to have soda. We have to have those kind of products, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Most districts are getting a scoreboard, that's fine. And not, not the type of scoreboard that's out at the moment.
Yes, very simple, so. Okay, any other comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve the beverage agreement with Coca-Cola? So can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the next one is adoption of a resolution to dispose of the ninety-one GMC three-quarter ton truck in Plow, which is not working, is the frame event, as we understand it.
It's a good size, it's a plow and lift truck. Very, very needed.
So, it stops. So this one's a pretty easy one, motion to dispose of this.
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And then on the backside is the purchase of a new truck in Plow. Actually, we took that, so.
I figured that would be a quick set-up thing. So.
It doesn't snow here.
Yeah, exactly. Last time, we had to get it back home. So it was, so, cool. This one's also convenient, I think, a motion to purchase a new truck in Plow.
So.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Perfect. Uh, next one, so in your board pack, you'll read this whole thing about Montana School Board to conduct an elementary road association business. So most of it is, just saying that we are aligned with the DAs' things. There's some major errors in here, six and seven. I don't know why they have nomination of recummins in them and approves Crystal Center. And then the next one is Jennifer Hoffman, and then we approve of Cummings. So there is errors even in their voting and stuff like that. So I don't know what's in the public facts, but foundational lines that they think is fine.
Yeah, really, you're just looking at their advocacy platform and deciding whether or not that is something that you agree with. I would recommend, rather than doing that, this in a board setting, that the board designate Patrick to complete that voting for the board.
So, easy. We do big dues into the TSA, and it gives us the best workers' comp rates by far. So that's why we do it in the same ways. So that's, that's why we do it. They also are an advocate for legislative theories, yeah, that's us, so.
It's a big resource for us. We use it for a variety of things, you know, policy, you know, questions about various funds and legalities. It's, it's a good resource for us, and they, when you call, they answer. They're helpful, so.
Sounds good, all right. Any questions, concerns, comments? Not? So the motion to, for me to act as delegate to vote on this association ballot. So can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Perfect. Next one is just a concerter approval of MOA between HST three and the public employees regarding the scheduling of the day-to-day. So, go for it.
This is our classified meeting, just because of the way that the calendar falls and the contracts needs. Because of the holiday at New Year's, they would, well, they would need to have the extra payday in twenty-twenty-five, December thirty-first. That's not advantageous for our employees, and they prefer to have a payday following the holiday. So just to accommodate the fact that we do have a contract that says the payday is the thirty-first, they've agreed to sign the MOA with the district to allow payroll to pay them in twenty-twenty-six.
So it's simple?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve this. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say nay. All right, next one is the revised district void student handbook for twenty-five twenty-six. Any comments with Florida?
This is really just a provision to accommodate for legislative changes. It's all just legally required things that will align with our policy changes as well.
Sounds good. Comments, questions?
How long does it take, I want to read this. I ask that because it does, it does say that you're, maybe you and your parents need to read this with signs saying you've read it. So we're putting everyone in a position where they have to say they've read a document. I don't, I'm arguing that most people aren't doing that.
Well, I would, well, just, I mean, the reality is, in the state of Montana, this is what, this form, we do alter it slightly to fit our needs, but this format is consistent with the majority of districts in this state, and it's what's recommended by, and essentially, MTSBA or outside council, as well as myself. You know, I get, it's like, you know, when you buy a car or take a loan up your home. It's a lot of information, and most people don't read it. The expectation is that they will, if they sign it and they don't, then that's their decision.
Sounds good.
I think we should shorten it.
Yeah, two pages.
Maybe not two, I'm not sure two, but there's a lot of options in between two and this.
So, this is, you stay in your course, I, this is not. So, cool. Can we get a motion to approve the student handbook?
I don't think you need a motion.
Oh, you're just adding information. Okay, so the next one is the.
Same comments. These are also just legislatively required updates that will align with the policy changes that are also required by legislation.
Sounds good. Any comments?
We're going to ask them to sign saying they read this document.
I'm using.
I'm sorry. Oh, it's going to be, is it in this document?
There's like a check off if they have to.
Okay.
All right. So, cool. We have this updated in jerk school, but we already have it here from your eye. So, all right, board policies. So we have a bunch that are just basically refund policies that we have to introduce. We can rapid firings. So the first one is review of ten fifteen, realize there are papers on the floor. Into the hole now. Exactly.
Give you a statement.
So, do you want to give an overview?
First one, we have two things that we added to the agenda.
Yes, yes. So ten fifteen is our district mission and goals. This is, this requires an annual re, either recommitment or revision of that policy. My recommendation is that we recommit to the existing policy as is. The building admin are doing some work and aligning some of the actions that they have going in their building that would be consistent with the objectives in there. So we're going to evaluate some gaps or some strengths, and then in twenty-twenty-six, I hope to be able to bring back to you some recommendations for change or revision, and we'll do it at that point, but.
Excellent, okay. Can I get a motion to approve Policy Ten Fifteen as written? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, now we're going to all the other policy ones.
Yeah, that's our first room are the policies that are legally required, so we only need to review enhancements before adopting. I will start my usual rundown, and if anyone wants to move stuff, just let me know, okay? We'll just keep it on. So the first one is Policy One Thousand One Hundred and Eleven, and this basically updates to accommodate for legislative changes regarding filing deadlines for trustee election. It's pretty straightforward. There are some notice provisions, but you can see the redlining. It's nothing too controversial. We want to make sure that we're aligned and stay well on that. Twenty-one hundred is our, let's see, our school activities in Freedom Week. We have new legislation that requires us to provide content related to the list, and you can see it in the red on the document, there's a list of holidays and reservances. One of the bigger changes is Freedom Week, which is in September. We talked about this, and we, and the teachers understand, you'll probably be receiving updates from the superintendent on the actual activities that take place to comply with this. Twenty-one thirty-two is apparent rights, just again updating, making sure that parents have the right to opt out of any survey or analysis that does not include personally identifiable information, but we must have them opt in if students are going to be subjected to analysis or surveys that do include personally identifiable information. So if it's blind, we let parents know, hey, if you don't want your student taking this, you can opt out. If it's going to include personally identifiable information, we say, please give us permission to allow your student to take this. So it's just a little bit of a distinction there. Twenty-one thirty-five is HSI notifications. This is actually a really positive development. I think it's super well received by our staff. I think probably maybe everybody but Mr. Juliette remembers when this came into play, when we had to start getting notification for instruction in HSI. The definition of HSI was super broad. It basically encompassed, let's see, what's our favorite one?
Spanish.
Spanish, for one, yes. Romeo Juliette is another one. We had a human sexuality instruction notification for Farbion with a drafter of that legislative, legislature, legislation intended. And now it's now back to only those courses that actually the intent is to instruct in human sexuality or human reproduction. There's also another component to this, which relates to identity instruction. So for identity instruction, parents have to opt in, again, without written permission to allow their student into that type of curriculum. For HSI notification, it's an opt-out. So we give the notification. If the parent does not want their student involved in that curriculum, they opt them out. So again, two different standards for two different types of curriculum. Also, it's slightly different this year. We do have to post either the curriculum itself or summaries of the curriculum on our website and provide parents with a link to that. Parents are always welcome to come in and actually inspect the full curriculum. And that goes for all of our courses, not just this type of material. So I've worked with the teachers that this applies to, but most of our teachers, like our English departments are thrilled, also our foreign language departments with gendered languages are thrilled that they don't have to keep sending kind of pesky reminder to families for things that don't really impact.
Is everyone is talking about is the difference between feminine and masculine or foreign language?
Yeah, and the potential that someone will ask the question. You know, it's also, I guess, in some languages, some languages, there is another case for.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, for those who don't identify accordingly. So when a teacher has to answer that question, because it does usually come up, that's when the recommendation is, they used to have that for them, so. This is a common sense change, I think, and it seems to be really well received across the state as well, so.
Are we planning on implementing identity instruction?
There are, there is a very small portion of the curriculum at the high school for help, too, and I believe, I don't think that Ms. Mitchell's parenting course goes into that. It's literally, it just talks about, there are some attitudes that are different than, you know, we're more ungendered, and that's what we say. So it's a very small unit, and I'm working with Ms. Antoni on that to make sure that we fully notify the parents and that she does have that written permission form for students to sit through that curriculum. It's in our textbooks. It's nothing that's been brought in. It's just part of the whole package for that material. And that's also fully explained with a summary of the material and that goes on, so. That one, and then, let's see, twenty-one fifty is youth suicide awareness. This is also an improvement to just bolster our efforts to make sure that we kind of combat this epidemic that's going on in Montana with people taking their lives. And OPI will also be rolling out a low-cost or no-cost suicide awareness prevention training. We already have it available in our vector training, so it's been, we've assigned it for years. We're just going to continue to assign it, so.
But there's vector training?
Vector training is what all of our employees have to take. It's where they find that staff handbook and have to sign up on it. But we do things that are, like TANON training goes through that for most people. Our admin takes a separate TANON training, but things like, oh, inhale, there's bloodwork pathogens. There's safe schools, yeah, it's a lot of different courses, but it relates to student safety for the most part. Yep, and then move on to twenty-one sixty-five, which is expanding our early targeted intervention, which is super important, but has been focused in language, so English at this point, reading. Now it's going to include math, and we do offer this program, so that's why we need to update our policy, so we can throw the math into it as well. Twenty-three thirty-five has to do with religious instruction. Thirty-four, sorry, twenty-three thirty-four. And we already do this, which is to permit, you know, allow the excused absence for students who want to attend religious instruction. Now it's required by the state. So it won't change what we do. It just is language, literally, that needs to be updated in policy. Twenty-four fifty is IFA, so that's Indian Education for All updates, basically enhancing the requirements for districts who receive Indian Education for All funding. We now have some very clear goals and standards that we have to meet. We'll be doing some work on the webpage that we set up for this to kind of share out what our teachers are doing. I attended a conference, and thanks for supporting me out in Boston this summer. It was really enlightening and really trying to go over with people who are certified to, I guess, teach on the subject to our teachers. And then also, we'll be trying to meet the expectation that every teacher in the district across all disciplines has some form of Indian Education for All curriculum involved in their year. So it's, you know, it is important for us to continue to receive our funding, and we do this, and we've had a lot of buy-in, and I think it'll be a no-brainer for us as well. Three, thirty-one ten is A and B funds for special education preschool students. So this does require us to allow out-of-district special education preschool students, but now we're going to be receiving A and B funds for those students, which is great. Let's see, thirty-one forty-one is out-of-district enrollment in Jump Start. So this one goes through a bunch of enrollment issues. It's more, it's kind of clarifying what we need to do for remote instruction enrollment, and it's kind of cleaning up some of the gray areas that we've been dealing with with students from out-of-district that want to be enrolled in our online platforms. So it is, it's a good advancement. It answers a lot of questions that we've been having, we've dealt with it formally with our neighboring districts. So that one just clarifies things. And thirty-two ten, this is one about residency, and it basically says that except, as permitted by law, students in private homeschools seeking to participate in extracurricular activities have to provide proof of identity and residency. So this has to do with, I guess, the situation, I think it was in. So this has to do with, I guess, the situation, I think it was in Rosling, where some Canadian students were sort of traveling around the country and enrolling in different schools as they went, and they weren't US citizens, so that they could have as many contests as possible. So, um, residency, I did appreciate it, and now we have a set of legislation, so here we are, yeah.
There's a rule there.
Yep, um, thirty two thirty five, basically legalizes what we've always been doing with regards to recording in the public setting. Um, now we are actually legally allowed by Montana law to record our programs, um, our other contests and things that are actually public activities where students might be in attendance.
Have a beef with this one.
Yeah?
Yeah, because they try to set up the system of finding sports that want to use other platforms to stream. Like for baseball and softball, we have Gamechanger. But they make it illegal for us to utilize those because they, M H S A has the right to all of the broadcast for all the sports, but there is no equipment to broadcast from those areas. Uh, and a lot of our kids use those.
So they just passed it, it just changed. So just this next year is gonna go with policy and that non postseason events, um, for softball, baseball, and where athletics happen at like places away from the school district, we can now use Gamechanger.
Oh, perfect.
So does that?
I mean, it, it, well, the problem with it is obviously, I mean, you have a kid trying to go to college and posting sort of, uh, you know, videos and things of their performance during games, we can't get those, and it's a huge, I don't know.
Yeah, so it has changed now, so we will be able to stream.
The year I my kid graduates.
No, no, this is upcoming year, this upcoming year. Postseason will still be the NFHS, but, uh, regular season baseball and softball, we can use Gamechanger.
Better not have a beef anymore.
Yeah. Sorry, it's just like that.
Turn away my beef.
It's good.
So it is, it's a good thing, because obviously we know that we're videoing public events, and now we can do it legally, um, above court. So, um, thirty four ten is parental opt out for health screenings. We do per more health screenings, um, hearing and vision, and I believe that, um, daily we do a dental screening. Yeah, this is out, okay. So this is just a notify parents that we're offering the service if you wanna opt your child out, you know, you're welcome to do so. And that's in keeping within, uh, the parents' rights and legislation we have. So, uh, thirty six fifty five is, um, this is student protection. Again, this is something we already do. So for any staff member that, well, really we do it for all of our staff members that we hire, when we do criminal background checks, this requires us to do criminal background checks. You're gonna see it again, this is the student side of the policy, and then there's the employee side of the policy, same thing, just different location in our working book. Uh, let's see, one more, and fifteen one twenty is, um, work authorization forms. Again, we've been doing this all along because it's a federal requirement, but now by state law as well, you have to make sure that we're checking, um, the immigration type of paperwork, so I'm, I'm set up, we're gonna check, um, passports or two points that I need to make sure that people are on their S D here. Already do it, nothing's gonna change. Um, fifteen one twenty two, fingerprint background check, again, this is the staff side of what we just discussed. Um, it's not gonna change our, change our practices, we already do this. And, let's see, next one is fifty three twenty one, uh, we're talking about public office leave. Um, I don't, you guys may or may not be aware that if, uh, one of our employees holds public office, they are entitled to take a leave of absence. We just need to require them to take their own vacation, their accrued vacation to accommodate that. Um, if we allow employees in general to take their, their laptop, their district laptop or district phone with them during their leave, we also have to allow that type of device or resource to go with employees who serve in public office. It's essentially a non discrimination stat, um, update to make sure that those who serve in public office aren't treated differently than others who take leave. So that's that, we don't have a choice in that. Eighty one eleven is, um, transportation for students with disabilities. Uh, we obviously have this, um, concept of open borders, nonetheless, um, with our neighboring districts. So now if we have a special education student who's coming from another district, if that student's I E P says that one of their related services is transportation, we do have to provide that now. So, um, this is something that we've done in other areas, um, it won't be hard, we will, you know, make it happen. Um, eighty four fifty is, let's see, um, A D requirements, this actually dramatically reduces the burden of having A Ds on campus. We only have to provide, um, a list of locations of where our A Ds are located to nine one one, Arbor Valley, nine one one, operators. And we have to obviously keep records on maintenance, but you can see through all the strike throughs, it used to be a lot more arduous for nurses to, um, comply with that statute on A Ds.
Does this make it easier to access?
Makes it easier for us to have them, um, less recording is required. We still have to make sure that they're operational, we still have to make sure batteries are charged, all those things, but.
And maybe the coaches or people who are gonna be in contact with kids who might need them know how to use them and know where they are. Is there that trending?
We do have CPR training, which I believe includes A Ds as well. Just did it again.
There was a kid at the softball tournament in Helena, he came with kids, the face person threw a basement in cardiac arrest, it was on the CT.
Yeah, yeah. They're assuming.
I think it's really important, and it's, it's, I don't think it's ever intentionally omitted, it just is an easy thing to miss when we're bringing on new coaches or, or this and that. I think it's, it's really important, and I, I know you, you try to do that, and I know we should just continue to do that. I remember when I was in eighth grade coach, I had to ask, and it's just one of those things that you gotta go through, and hopefully none of us ever even.
We're also, the district is working on a grant, um, and Travis is kind of have to step up on that so that we can be reimbursed for purchasing more A Ds. So, um, this is all super positive, and it's, I mean, it's a great direction, because nobody wants that tragedy. So that's the end of our first reading, newly required policies. Um, after that, I'm not gonna take a vote as a group on those, or?
Just a question, we have one policy forty five twenty, which we need to go into.
I don't.
But I don't know if it's, it's not in either.
Yeah.
It's in our packet.
I think had we missed it on the actual agenda, but we did somehow got it not listed on the front page, so we were gonna have that one next time.
We need to get, I think, everybody to get added to this one, I always got.
That's you, I have it.
It's in here.
It's in the packet, yeah. So it's just on the agenda, I just write it on, I would say, let's, let's go over it.
So forty five twenty, it deals with, um,
T.
The permission to allow the district to enter into, um, countywide multi-district agreements. It doesn't require it, it's just the ability to do so if you choose to, at some point.
The grievance on the law act. This is just the, you know, just means like, you know, the kind of countywide resource grant and all that kind of stuff. So, it's just, it's giving that opportunity, it doesn't really have to be.
Yep, it just gives you the, you really have to do that.
All right, so we went through all these questions on any of the policies. If not, make it easy. Um, motion to approve all policies that are going to be A now through T, um, that we just went through.
Absolutely.
Can I get a second?
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
All those opposed say nay. Perfect, now options.
Options, twenty four ten. So, um, this is graduation credit, we had a disparity between the listing of the credits required for graduation between our, um, information at the high school and in the policy, so we're just updating it to correct that. So that should look good to everybody, um, we want that to be correct, so I think that's, I recommend that we pass this one or approve it. Um, thirty three ten is, let's see, optional, this, we have a couple in the optional that deal with A I. Um, this one really rolls A I use into our student code of conduct, so that students are to be using it responsibly and ethically, not for, you know, cheating and things like that. And it makes it, um, a disciplinary matter if we do find that there's academic dishonesty. Um, we also have a companion piece to A I, right, a little bit further on for our staff. We can talk about that too. Um, thirty four sixteen is also optional. This allows us to have a stock supply of albuterol and also epinephrine. Obviously super important for nurses to be able to handle emergency situations with our students. Um, I think they would like to have this ability to have this stuff on, on, you know, hand if needed.
What is a stock supply?
Stock supply, we'd, so we would get a, a prescription from a physician to allow the district, you know, without a particular.
Five doses, is it?
Oh, they usually have like two extras at each school, like the EpiPins.
Because everything is really tough, because their expiration.
They are, yes, yeah, and then we have to, yeah, but then we have to get new ones when, when they expire. And then albuterol, I think they try to have one or two of those extra.
At least albuterol isn't just quite as quick to expire, but I think EpiPins are only good for like six months or anything.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Even kept refrigerated, and like two hundred dollar fees.
Yeah, yeah, it is something that we, that we have done, I think this just allows us to do it in the right manner, right? Right?
Yeah, I saw that on the highlight screen, but yeah, I think we definitely need to have that good stuff just looking at the D.
Um, thirty six twelve, this is the employee side of A I use. Essentially, it's, um, you know, just saying that addresses use of A I tools as part of the stuff we use by students. Um, this one also updates, it's a goal loss for the update of the student handbook for A I for students. Um, so it's really just a companion piece of, the first one talks about forty three thirty two, display of flags. So you may or may not be aware that we have new legislation that makes the display of flags out of an enumerated list of flags, um, not acceptable on government property. So, um, we've been talking to our teachers, um, about the use of flags and banners in the buildings. Um, it's a pretty extensive list really of what's allowed, but there are also clearly a lot of flags and banners that are included. So we're working through that, it would be really helpful to have this policy passed so that it's very clear throughout land books and other things and just the expectations.
Does that apply to kids putting flags on their vehicles, in their vehicles?
Not on their vehicles, um, because it's not, it's not a government action, that's their own political speech.
But they're on district property, and it's if that was on district property.
That would be on their own personal property, but what would not be okay, for example, is if they put one on their locker, because that is district property, right? Or, you know, um, I, we have those on our senior apartment lots, but I can imagine spaces yet, but I mean, actually sitting on a toilet, putting one on a parking space, that might be an issue too. So, um, we'll be, obviously, this, you know, the legislation is new, there are some gray areas as to what's permitted and what's not permitted. I mean, just getting some legislation of sounds sort of along the way, and, you know, or litigation along the way. We will continue to adjust how we address this issue, um, as we go, and we'll probably be taking down our accreditation flag. So, yeah, which is that, this is the kind of.
That makes sense, this is a day.
So, that's that, fifty four sixty is A I acceptable use for staff. Um, I, we talked to staff, Chris, Mrs. Howard, staff and I did earlier this week, and, you know, the idea is to kind of model correct ethical behavior with A I for students. No problem with staff using it for their own productivity, um, we just have to be super careful that we don't include personally identifiable information on students or confidential information into, for example, chat G P T or the other platforms. Um, it just, we've done a lot of educating around that, and, um, also, you know, just to make sure that they understand that using A I for academic, um, dishonesty is something that can be addressed through discipline.
How do they catch that? Like what, what's in place for our poor English teachers, they're trying to figure out that the kid wrote their own paper?
The, the short one or the long?
Short, the short one's fine, I'm just curious.
Um, well, it's ever changing, but we have a set of A I checkers, um, and we ask the students generally on like a final draft to run their own work through it, so it will give us three different results readings. Um, I usually run it through about seven or eight, um, if I find one that's flagged, um, just to see if the other checkers, because there's lots of arguments, like, this doesn't really work, but, um, at the end of the day, I'm quite sure that there are some workarounds even with that. Um, it's just a constant lane trying to do stuff, but a lot of us are also now switching to handwritten, like I do a lot of in-class handwritten, to really sort of get it down on that. I mean, obviously, there's some things like a writing one-on-one tool in Roman class, I have to, like, they have to get ready for college writing, so we're doing a lot of that, but I still have those structures in place, um, but, you know, it's.
Are there any false positives, like if a kid works really hard on a paper, you can go through a lot of resources.
Yeah, I have, I have false positive because the student actually did like a voice to text, and it got flagged because voice to text uses A I to take the voice and type it. So that section that he did voice to text got, it was flaming red. But the paragraph before that he had typed on his own was flagged, does that make sense? So it, it was a little bit of a, uh, I, I kind of, we had some conversations with mom, a lot, um, pretty frantic, but we figured it out, so.
So it's not like somebody can literally do all the research, type their paper, have a lot of a citing, you know, whatever, whatever they got it from, and end up being flagged without using the A I platform?
I mean, I think it's possible, yeah.
That's what I'm, that's the only, we have some really smart students that can really put it in the paper and propose that a policy that really isn't meant to get.
So when I flip a paper, if I, and I'll just randomly run them through, like if a paper gets flagged when I'm running it through, I will take it, I will, it takes fifteen, twenty minutes of, from start to finish for every paper that I'm gonna check, um, give or take. Um, and I will run it through all of the checks. I will also run it through Google, like, it's free throw, so if, if, you know, two, two or three out of those seven are getting flagged pretty significantly, I have a conversation. If it was just that one, and everything else comes back clean, I'll be like, hey, just wanna let you know this one got flagged, let's, let's, I mean, it's, it's the best we can do. But, yeah, it's a monster.
Yeah, it seems like it. We have, uh, Cliff Notes, that was.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I kind of wanna go back to just like, just type it in and it's like copy and paste piece of from Google. Like I kind of miss those days right now, but, um.
Yeah, and when you read the research, it's an arms race, you know, they come up with a way to work around it, and then the R L M is generating tools to, to fatten that down, and then they come up with a new way to work to get around it, and it's just, it's.
You can have it, you can still have A I write it for you and then just write it down.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are gonna be some, some clues, like if a student's using, you know, fifteen dollar words that you know they don't know, uh, it's a giveaway, so, yeah.
That's probably the best thing, actually reading their work.
I read everything, I read everything they give me, my idols are paying the price for us. They are, we make classes. And so those are just first reading, and we can talk about them again at the next board meeting.
Perfect, awesome, we can, we can think about the A I stuff. All right, made through all that, hey, now.
Well, the, uh, the next part is our budget hearing. So this is, uh, will require a resolution to adopt a budget that is presented in front of you. Um, so Kathy and I have been collaborating about this budget for several weeks now, um, and tweaking and adding and whatnot. So ultimately, what is happening here is the approval of the taxation, local taxation. Um, and so the biggest things about that are the number of mills that we're assessing and the value of the taxable value in the district. Surprisingly, our taxable value actually went down, nope, I was shocked. Uh, but I will point out that the five point nine million in district property tax, and I'm referring to this table here, that's what I'm looking at, that's actually less than the, uh, was six point three million that, uh, was generated by local property tax last year. Um, so in addition to that, just so you are aware, that I, um, put a table on here, um, at your seat, that has, shows you, um, what the tax implication would be, those would be the increases. So a hundred thousand dollar home would see an increase of a dollar and eighty four cents. Uh, and that'd be annually. Um, and then a three hundred thousand dollar home would see an increase of five dollars and fifty one cents um, over a twelve month span, and then a six hundred thousand dollar home would see an increase of eleven dollars and two cents. So those are the tax implications, um, for our community. Um, it's not a large increase, it is, uh, one point three six mills of an increase. Anytime, you know, you're approving taxes, I know that comes with some trepidation, um, but that is what Kathy and I would recommend the board approve for the budget here. And then obviously you would see expenditures throughout the year in your warrants and claimings reports.
I'll say this, because I think I'm required to say it, um, any taxpayer at the district can attend this meeting, can be heard against or for any part of this budget, so I'm required to say that. Where does this put us on actual percentage of, uh, levies that we can do? Uh, we don't change, right? So it's, you know, this is, until we pass a, another levy, like we're supposed to hold it, then it's, or levy, so that's true.
Right.
So we're still below a whole hundred percent actualized levy.
Can you just help me understand what a mill is? I did the calculation of, at least from, for the general fund, our district property tax requirement.
divided by our taxable value less incremental taxable value, which is thirty-six million. And that gives us sixty-nine point eight eight. So I understand where the mill comes from, but why does it come from that? What's, and, and then further, once we have what a mill is, is a mill what? The taxation department uses to multiply someone's personal property tax value by to create their taxable amount that they pay?
Yeah, so in a nutshell, if you were to, let's just say you have this hundred thousand dollar home. The property tax rate would be, I think it's one point three five percent is generally the rate. So that percentage then is the taxable value. Then you're going into multiplying that by the total number of mills. So the hundred and sixty, what is it, hundred sixty-three point four, four five? You're multiplying that and then dividing it by a thousand. That's where the mills comes in, it's a thousand of that value. So that's what's.
Millenger.
Yeah.
Mill.
Yeah.
We're very clear, clear as mud and.
Yeah.
Don't tell anybody.
Right.
Now, my question was more to like, that's all based off of this taxable value of the entire community. Of all of the taxable homes and property tax in the Hampton School District, that number is three hundred, no, three.
Thirty-six.
But like, I'm looking at three billion dollars?
That's market value.
Yeah, total market value and the taxable value is thirty-six million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty.
Right.
And we use that taxable value to then, and our needs as a district to determine how we need to spread that.
Yeah. Run that. And if you were to, if you were to graph, you know, your, the taxable value versus the value of a mill, you're going to see almost a reflection of what that looks like. You're going to get two, two different lines that reflect one another.
I understand, I understand. So this is why those men at those places do so well, bond passages and stuff like that, because their taxable value is way higher.
Yeah.
We, we suffer because ours is smaller. So, but Corvallis suffers more because theirs is smaller, you know.
So the economy scare was a, is a real deal.
Yeah. So not happy to see it drop through.
Right.
It's not helping us when we try to pass a bond levy.
Yeah.
Cool, questions, any additional questions on the budget and all that rest of it?
It's a name, go ahead.
And just, so you're approving the taxation levels, you're approving the values that would go into those funds. So the budgeting that we would go through over the course of the year trying to get to a point where we can be more proactive and plan as a goal that Kathy and I have talked about frequently. So this is a first step in that process.
Just that, like, I can't remember because I don't have it printed. Do you know what, because we obviously in March, we have to play our potential resolution, how close this R B? Do you know?
Um.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I did have that earlier today, I don't have it, would be it, don't have it memorized.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I just, I was just curious, we can live it later and something like that. I was just curious how close we were.
We're actually to the estimates.
That, to the estimates. Because it's always a weird thing.
I don't understand where you're at.
So in March, we actually have to estimate what we're going to put on this resolution. This is the final version, so in March, we say we're going to do this and then now we actually do it. And there are going to be differences between those two. And so that's, it's, it's, it's a good indicator for me on how well we're doing in terms of estimating our budget. Say how we do in March to how we do when we come in August, because things change. But it's, it's also good to know that we are looking at budgets well then.
Our, our tuition fund is a classic example. So there was so much unknown with what that was going to look like. And so most districts were way overestimating what they were going to charge with tuition because they didn't know what we were going to have to pay in other districts. And so now you know, and you actually can see in this budget that we have reduced that from last year. So the benefit to the district is that taxes from other communities have now helped to support our general fund. By whole, that's, that's the whole shift.
Money.
Yeah.
I'm talking from money. Yeah, cool, all right, any other questions?
I'm just curious on the debt service fund.
Yeah.
What debts we're servicing and where we're going to pay them off and.
Just call some daily.
Yeah, so you're, you got daily, you got the football stadium, you got those sorts of things is what that is all about. I wish Kathy were here to answer that, she would have a better idea for where we're at.
Well, we went to the bond numbers one week ago. I think it was like two, two or three years and then they have a false off. So we're not too far off on some of those.
Yeah.
So getting closer to one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah. So getting closer. So I don't think we have any, any of our, trying to think of any of the ones.
Those are the ones you're right, no body.
Yeah, I think the ones are not, I think.
No, we're, that's. Yeah, there's still one.
There's still one.
Because I was asking about the industry.
Okay, yeah, so I think we're just down to one, right? But it was, it's getting closer, how's the technicality one, is that correct? Can't remember, I think it was something like that, so.
That's something Kathy and I could work on the next, I could be able, someone to report back to you about.
Perfect, all right. Any more questions, concerns? All right, if not, can I get a motion to adopt these budget mechanism?
So.
Can I get a second? Any other questions, concerns, couple of questions, comments, anything out there? Just make sure.
Let me just update.
Yeah, that's fine, just wanted to make sure before.
If there's any question to show in your hand, so.
Perfect, sounds good, all right. All that's good, all right, all those in favor, say aye?
All right.
All those opposed, say nay? Perfect, all right. We're good to go, expand the like, that was. All that and stuff, we're ready for these, good luck, guys.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
We're here.
You know about that R H S A. You can send the big sheet back over.
Yeah.